All right, let's call the meeting to order. We'll do it. Roll call, please. Clerk?
Bozen.
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Simonson?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, our second item is approving the agenda as presented or amended. I don't have any items.
I'll move approval on item two with the updated speaker list.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approving the consent agenda. We've got item number five, Voss votes no. Item number six, Westergaard wishes to speak and from the public on the consent agenda, item forty-nine, Marco Battaglia, and I believe speaks now.
Yeah, Marco's right here.
Yeah. Marco, you have three minutes, so please, please give your name and address or your ward number, please.
Sure. Good evening. Marco Battaglia, Ward 4, 50315, not far from the most excellent Monsterama Arcade and Pizzeria. I'll be on the ballot this November 5th for Congress, U.S. House District 3 Rep. Not been able to attend council meetings with my previous regularity because I've been a correctional officer. This is my sixth year on duty. This being said, I'm very familiar with body worn cameras. I use one. I wear one every time I'm on duty, usually around fifty or more hours a week at current staffing levels. They're great tools. In addition to officers of the state, I support all public servants wearing them, but like most tools, they can be limited by one's sense of duty and one's policy. If not transparently utilized, bureaucrats can create, direct, curate, edit, and control, both in terms of what's captured and what's left out, and also at which political moment it's publicly released. Body videos are now routinely used in almost every prosecutor office in the U.S. as evidence to get mostly poor people to quickly plead guilty to things like drug possession. They're almost never used against police officers, not on good cops, bad cops, or anywhere in between. Cameras don't make police less violent or less likely to jump to deadly force. I'm asking the council to please take all of this into consideration when it comes to these tools. As always, if you have any questions, I'm easy to find, and I hope that you all consider voting for me this November. Thank you.
Marco, thank you.
Move item three, Your Honor.
A second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Bozen is yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. We'll move on to the hearings now, and we're starting with hearing number On continuance of hearing on a commercial lease agreement with Panam and Sons LLC doing businesses Blue Tide Food and Sushi for the use of suite 309 for restaurant purposes located in city-owned property at the TM Franklin County City Administration Building located at 1200 Locust Street to August 5, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Is there anyone?
I'll move item fifty-nine, just a continuance.
Okay. All those ready to vote?
Connie?
Bozen, yes. Yes.
Seven, yes.
On First Amendment to a license agreement with the Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority, DART, for bus benches in Street Right-of-Way. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant? Jermaine? Yeah, okay. We're gonna vote.
Bozen?
Bozen, yes.
Seven, yes.
On approval of a license agreement with Timbercrest Homes LLC for use of a portion of East Army Post Road Right-of-Way at planned southeast 30th Street for private stormwater treatment improvements, $4,900. Approving Three Lakes Estate Platte 10, Final Platte, and acceptance of subdivision bond, Council Communication Number 24302. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant? Is there anyone to speak that is within 250 feet of the applicant? Anyone here to speak? General comments? Jermaine comments?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move sixty-one, sixty-one A.
Okay. Shall we vote?
Bozen, yes.
All right, on...
Chris.
Chris?
Seven, yes.
Sixty-two, on approval of license agreement with Des Moines Water Works for placement of data collection equipment on various city-owned properties. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant? Are there Jermaine comments from the general public?
Seeing none, Mayor Protem. I'll move item sixty-two.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Bozen, yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. Item sixty-three, on conveyance of a permanent easement for water main Right-of-Way in property located at 2704, 2706, 2714, and 2718 George Flag Parkway to Des Moines Water Works, $1. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant? Hearing none. Are there any Jermaine comments from the general public?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'll move item sixty-three.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Bozen, yes.
Seven, yes.
On request from Orchard Place, Des Moines Children's Home, Valerie Saltskaver, Officer, to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and to rezone a parcel located in the vicinity of 1301 Kenyon Avenue from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed Use District to limited NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow reuse of the existing building as a group living, not otherwise classified use. And so we have two alternatives to approve, require six votes for approval due to opposition from the relevant property owners, and there are two items. There are the first consideration of the ordinance above, final consideration of the ordinance above, waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes, or B to deny. Is there anyone here to speak? Okay. First, properties of interest. The applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second, Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, twenty minutes max. Is the applicant in the room?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Step forward to the mic or phone, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Leon Negan, CEO, Hope Ministries, 5075 East University Avenue, thank you for this opportunity to make some remarks about our planned use of the property at 1301 Kenyon Avenue. I believe that we all see the need in our city for helping homeless people to return to productivity and for providing affordable housing, which is so greatly needed. We have the opportunity to address both of these community objectives with this project. Any concern around it seems to be solely with its location. I want to acknowledge that city staff recognized the merits of this proposal by recommending it for approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted overwhelmingly for approval by a vote of twelve to one. The Board of Adjustment will vote on the conditional use permit needed for NX2 zoning if the City Council passes this project this evening. This property will be utilized to create 12 units of supportive, affordable rental housing for formerly homeless men. This is downsized from the 14 units that exist today on this property. On the scale of things, this would be our smallest residential project by a large margin. We could utilize this property for eight renters with no rezoning or special consideration whatsoever, but the operation would not cash flow with only eight affordable units. We will have case managers available as needed to meet with renters during their stay to support their success and transition back to full community productivity. But the truth of the matter is this. The secret sauce that makes this such a successful model is not actually staff support or oversight. It is, in fact, the encouragement and accountability provided by the eleven other renters who have all put tremendous effort into their journey back from homelessness, who want no roadblocks or obstacles in their way to a full return to productive community participation. This project is not a homeless shelter. It is affordable rental housing for fully employed, formerly homeless men, paying rent, and engaging in personal responsibility and accountability as tax-paying citizens and contributing to our community. That is exactly what our community says is the desired outcome for people who were once homeless. One of the largest concerns of this city over the past several years is the rapidly growing number of unsheltered homeless people who are sleeping in tents on public land, occupying our parks, and wandering from place to place aimlessly. Hope Ministries has a proven track record of providing solutions that work for this population, and we have been doing this for 109 years. Each time we develop a new project in this city, we are met by resistance from the neighborhood. This occurred when we built our men's shelter at 1310 Sixth Avenue, when we built the Door of Faith Life Recovery Center at 6701 Southwest 9th Street, at 3333 East University, when we developed the Center for Women and Children, and it occurred once again when we purchased property at 3800 East Douglas to develop our newest center for women and children. We heard repeatedly at the neighborhood meeting for this project on Kenyon Avenue, "We think Hope Ministries is a great organization. We admire your work, but don't do it in our neighborhood. Do it somewhere else." So I ask you, Mayor and City Council Members respectfully, if our community truly wants to address the problem of growing homelessness, then if not here, and not here, and not here, and not here, then where? Thank you.
Leon, could you stay out? I've got a couple of questions. So, one of the things that I think it's in the record, but I'd like you to address, folks who are eligible to live here, they have to have been through one of your programs. How do they become eligible?
Yeah, that's true. No one who would live in this housing would be from outside of Hope Ministries. We would have served every one of them. They would have either been through our life recovery program at the Door of Faith, which is around the corner from Kenyon Avenue, or they would have been in our shelter. All of them have to be fully employed to be able to obtain housing here, and all of them have to pay rent. And if they are not fully employed and they don't pay rent, along with a whole number of, whole list of other restrictions, they would not be able to stay in this housing.
Could you go over some of those other rules?
I will. Very briefly. Renters will be required to follow rules designed for the safety and well-being of all. That's them and their neighbors and the surrounding community. These rules will include, but not limited to, paying rent on time, observing and obeying all civil laws, no possession or use of alcohol, illegal drugs, or drug paraphernalia within the premises or on the grounds. Residents must maintain a sober state. No guns or weapons are permitted within the premises or on the grounds. No overnight guests or children will be permitted within the premises or on the grounds, and there will be no pets of any kind.
Who's there to monitor that? Who's gonna be the person that monitors all of those rules?
Yes. So, first of all, as I said in earlier statements, the people that actually care the most about all those rules are the renters who have now become clean and sober if they had alcoholism or substance abuse in their lives, or whatever their issue may have been. They're the ones that want the most. They're the people who have invested the most in making this work, and they are not going to allow the other people in that affordable rental housing to goof it up for them. But beyond that, we have a couple of other layers. They're, one of the persons who is a renter will be the housing manager there, and they will receive their compensation for being the house manager to manage all of the things going on by either reduced or free rent at that property. And the other thing that we have in place is we are, as many of you know, a large organization. We have a large presence in this community for a long time. We have 75 staff members who are trained in how to assist homeless people at all levels. Just around the corner at the Door of Faith, we have four case managers, and we will have case managers available to those residents as much as is needed by those residents.
So, at all your other locations that you listed, are there trained professionals at all of them except for this one, then?
At all of the other facilities, the answer is yes, there are trained professionals at all of the other facilities. The people are currently homeless, and they are participating in a program. Here, they are not.
But they are homeless?
No, they were homeless.
But they're living at your facility?
They are living in a rental, affordable situation.
But prior to going there?
Prior to going there, they were homeless.
Okay.
And one of the questions that I've gotten from folks is about the eviction process in a facility like this. If there is someone that is violating these rules or someone that becomes problematic, what is the eviction process? Is it the normal eviction process that can take some time and go through court?
Yeah. It is not a normal eviction process because we, as an organization, as a 501(c)(3) who serves homeless people, we are not subject to the Landlord Tenon Act in the state of Iowa, and the Iowa State Code addresses that in Section 698(1A), and it addresses it also in Section 562(a). And so if there is any issue with any resident at any time about anything, we have the opportunity to evict immediately, and in fact, we do so regularly at any of our other facilities.
I've also heard some questions about, well, a couple of things. One is just maintenance of the site, particularly dealing with shrubs and other maintenance, and then conversely, preserving, is there some mature trees on the site? What is your planned approach on those set of issues?
Yeah, there's a rather large group of trees on this property and also on, I would say, five or six or seven other neighbors' properties adjacent to it. There's a creek that runs right through it on the property line. There are some very nice mature trees, and there are also shrubs and undergrowth that hasn't been tended to for a long period of time. As a neighbor, we always want to come into a neighborhood, and because of who we are and what we do, we know that we have to prove ourselves, and so we always look to come into a neighborhood and improve the property and make it better than when we came for everybody around us. So we absolutely have plans to get rid of that low-growing shrubbery on our property that's growing there, clear it up, make it a nice, a clean place to live.
Another question that folks have raised with me was whether or not there would be security cameras on the exterior of the present premises, and if that's something that you're willing to consider. Did you address whether or not there will be security cameras, and if that's something you're willing to consider?
Yes. So that question was asked at the neighborhood meeting that we had a couple of months ago, and my response at that time was we were not far enough down the road to get into that level of detail, and we didn't know if we would be putting up security cameras or not. But this evening, I want everyone to hear me say, "We absolutely are very willing to put up security cameras. If that's what people in the neighborhood wants, that's what we'll put there."
I do have a copy of the rules and the regulations that the residents in this facility would have to abide by, and it's a pretty long, extensive list of requirements that you're putting on to those men. I know that tonight, the only thing that we're looking at is just changing the zoning classification. You still have to go before Board of Adjustment, correct?
That is correct.
And so the Board of Adjustment would, they would issue a conditional use permit, correct?
They would.
And will, I'm assuming these rules will be abided by, and there's no problem if this is in the conditional use permit?
Absolutely. Whether it's in the conditional use permit or not, they will be abided by. That is my point.
But that's kind of an issue for the neighbors, I thought. So I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly.
That's correct, and they can and they will put conditions on our use.
Yes, thank you.
One quick question. You mentioned around the corner, is that your closest facility is, is that a mile away, two miles away?
I believe that it's 1.2 miles away. It's at 6701 Southwest 9th Street, and it is immediately across the street from the Watcher South neighborhood.
Okay. So if there was an issue or the caseworkers could come from there to...
Immediately.
To support. So now, let's see. We'll have parties of interest. Okay. First, parties of interest, those are applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. So if you live within 250 feet, you would have received a postcard about this. And if all of those who intend to speak could line up against the window, please?
I'm not within 250, but you still won't be over there?
No, because that'll be another wave. Thank you, though, for asking. All right, please state your name.
Audreyne Hanson, 1325 Kenyon Avenue. I'm three doors down from the proposed property. I've lived in this area for 40 years, and this is a blue-collar neighborhood. We've got teachers, you name it, coaches, all kinds of people living in this neighborhood. The children there attend Wright, Brody, and Lincoln High School, and as I remember back years, this is gonna date me, but Landmark Milders came in there when I lived on the other side of Kenyon, and they developed four and a half acres and built 22 homes. These homes directly, and I wish I had a map, but these homes come out on Cutler and 13th, out onto Kenyon, directly into the property at 1301, and we've got lots of little kids out there. You know, they built the houses, and I think of all the property taxes. This is maybe not the way to go, but I think of the property taxes that these 22 houses have given to the city of Des Moines and Polk County. And I'm looking at this property, and I tried to get the size of map of this one house. One house was just built and sold last year, and it's on the tax roll for $309,300, directly across the street from 1301. Now, they're gonna be paying taxes. When I go across the street, the property at Orchard Place, which is maybe Behope's, it's on the books for $845. No taxes paid. And I look, fair? I look at all these neighbors, and I, for one, I'm a senior citizen. I looked at the other homes up and down the street. We're not a rich neighborhood. I would say the houses vary from $190,000 to $260,000, and I'm not taking time to list them all. But I know for a fact, I, as a senior citizen, I'm paying $5,000 roughly on my house this year for property taxes. Now multiply that times the 22 plus the others in the neighborhood. And Hope Ministries, I found out going through, we've done some research, in the Des Moines area, they have $15 million worth of property that's tax-exempt. I have supported Hope Ministry through their special meal requests and give a yearly donation, plus I take items to the shop on Southeast 5th and Army Post Road. I am just, I want to help the homeless. I help them through my church, but I'm older. Our neighborhood is getting older, and to be really honest, folks, I'm just frightened. I'm just frightened to have homeless men in my neighborhood. We've got a sidewalk now. I want to go up and down the sidewalk. We've got kids that go to school. They stand and wait for the bus. What are they gonna do with these men waiting with the bus? I want to thank you for allowing me time to speak because this is really an important issue. I want to help both sides. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, I have another question for Leon that kind of triggered, because this site, I mean, there's a decent amount of green space at the front end of the site. Would there be a possibility to break up the parcels and add single-family homes on the front end?
I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that, but it is my suspicion that there probably is not room for single-family residential property on the street side of this property.
Would you be willing to explore that?
Oh, we'd be very willing. We only need as much property as that building takes. Yes.
Okay, next, please.
My name is John Carl. I'm a former teacher, coach. And my wife told me to write this down because I get to talk and it'd take forever and so forth. So I did. I sat down in front porch a while back and watching on a beautiful day, and some kids started going by. And they're heading, I live on Kenyon, they're heading down to Orchard Place. Four was all done, or fifteen of them that did that. And then it dawned on me, this is not a good thing. And it's not a good thing, it's not that. Hope Ministry is a great thing. And what they're doing for the homeless is wonderful. But what they're doing, it's like, we need prisons, but we don't build them across the street from the high school. We don't build them in the middle of a community. Different things are different done, and that's what's important here. The first meeting we had over this was at a library, and there were about 40 people showed up and so forth. And when we got done talking, explaining to them, I said, how many of you agree and want to have this? Not one hand went up. How many are opposed to this? Every hand went up. And I'm not against Hope Ministry, but I am against making life more difficult for the young children when they're growing up. You yourself have grown up, and you remember where you lived and the things that were involved. And one thing that cannot be involved is this ministry in this neighborhood. Orchard Place is a block and a half south of Wright Elementary. It's a block and a half east of the bus stop that picks kids up and takes them to Brody and brings them back. It's a block and a half west of a swimming pool where 50 kids were swimming the other day. And it's a block and a half north of Kurtz School and softball and baseball fields where people are playing. It bothers me when I think about this, and I decided that I probably should do what I can. And the reason is very simple. I talked to a lot of people, said, if this goes through, we're going to move. We have to. There was a last meeting, and somebody from Hope Ministry got up and spoke in behalf and said, the conditions don't make any difference. We've got a place down in this gorgeous apartment place on Mulberry Street downtown Des Moines. And so it's going great there. So my wife and I decided one Saturday afternoon to drive down there and take a look. And we did. It's a dead-end street, thank God, because kids won't be going down that way. When we pulled up there, there were three people laying on the ground, sleeping, no pillow, no blanket. One of them didn't have any clothes on from here on up. A fourth person was sitting next to the building, sitting over these hands between his legs, barefoot, no shoes or socks or anything like this. And I thought, boy, this would be a nice place in the neighborhood for kids to go by. So my wife said, let's go back. A day later. And the difference, a day later, there was one. There were 12 people out there rather than four. I'm all for Hope Ministry. I'm all for making life better for people. But if you're going to make life better for kids, you need to have a neighborhood that they can grow up in, and you don't have the problems that Hope Ministry might bring with this outfit. And the area where they live, where this Orchard Place is, if it was cleaned out, you could probably put five new homes in there easily. They just rebuilt one across the street for $300,000 worth. So anyway, this is the end for me that if this passes and something real negative happens, I'm going to never forgive myself for not convincing you that this need not happen.
So we'll have comments from the general public, and 20 minutes total, if you would line up against the windows so we have an idea how many people wish to speak.
Well, we'll just figure that's three minutes apiece. No? Two. Two minutes.
Two minutes apiece.
Two minutes apiece.
Let's go with Jerry's time and make it a half an hour.
Jerry, can you do this in two minutes?
Probably not. But I'll do the best I can. Don't take this time against me, but I didn't really want to be here tonight because today's my birthday.
Happy birthday, Jerry.
Thank you very much. And I happen to be 80 years old, and that is to the plus of some and to the chagrin of others. But here I am. When we speak of this project, the vast majority of the people that you hear tonight, I'm assuming, are going to be against it. And there are several reasons for that. If you look at the property itself, it's 3.1 acres. It has an approximate city assessed value at $845,000. It is within walking distance of the library. It's in walking distance of the pool, Nahas, and the public library. It's within a short distance of Wright Elementary. There are known six child molesters or sexual offenders within a maximum of 1.9 miles in circumference from this location. It doesn't belong in a neighborhood. Not that those people are against it, but I represent, I'm a member-at-large of the Watcher South Neighborhood Association, and we've done a survey that 90% of the people living in that area are against this proposal. Not that we're against group homes. As a matter of fact, there are several group homes that are within, probably there's six or seven of them within that radius. But a group home's different because they have 24/7, 365 monitoring. If you look at this property, let's just say that they build 12 units. By international builders code, there's going to be a substantial amount of refurbishing of that building to make it habitable, which would include sprinklers x amount. You take those 12, look at the amount of money that the property's worth, you're talking $67,000 per small unit.
Jerry, that was your time.
It doesn't belong there. It should be someplace else. Hope Ministries has a $34 million annual budget. I think they can find someplace that would be adequate for their needs. Thank you very much.
So when these kind of things come up, it seems like we always hear people that say it should be somewhere else.
Marco, do you want to, for the record?
Marco Battaglia, 50315 Ward 4. When these things come up, it seems like we always get, you know, it should be somewhere else. What I want everybody to take into consideration is that I work with incarcerated people of all security levels, and our job is to rehabilitate them. And when they come out, they're going to be your neighbors. They're going to be people that need to find jobs and they need to ride the bus. And not everyone is going to immediately be 100% sober, but they might be, you know, it doesn't mean they're not going to be a good neighbor. And it also, you know, when I hear things like, oh, they're lying there without shoes or without a blanket. Do you have an extra blanket? I would give them one, you know, if I saw them, instead of be like, why is this in my neighborhood? So I just think we need to consider that where I live on the south side, on my block, there are four or five people that are one bad week away from probably being houseless. So those are my neighbors, and I've never had a problem. And if I had a problem with them, I would go and talk to them. So that is my first thing that I would say to someone, that your only defense is not in my yard. So I think we desperately need more options for people that are trying to get their lives together, and desperately need more options all over the city and every ward and every neighborhood. So I honestly would rather have it be everywhere, and I'll leave the rest of my time for anybody else. But that's just what I felt moved to say. Thank you.
Earl Egan, 1113 Kenyon Avenue. I've talked to all of you. I talked to you last year when the idiots up on Capitol Hill were doing things without asking the public their opinion. As the gentleman from Hope Ministry said, we've heard from the planning and zoning, and we've heard from city staffs. So now we've heard from the bureaucracy. You're elected officials, you're public servants. That's your title. You are public servants. We have a representative for public. You're here to represent the public. You're not here to represent anything else. The people of the neighborhood have spoken. You've seen their votes, you've seen what they did, you've heard them. So now it's your opportunity to decide whether you're a public servant or whether you're smarter than all the people in the neighborhood. It's your opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. This is a...
Where we got to go?
Hold on here, just a moment.
Check what's going on.
Tornado warning. I suspect we're going to temporarily adjourn.
Make a motion to...
Well, they could be doing this all night long.
No. It's not a tornado warning, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So do I make a motion to temporarily suspend the hearing right now?
We're going to temporarily suspend the motion. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to temporarily suspend the hearing until after the tornado warning.
I'll second.
And everyone needs to move to the basement. Right. Help her first. Get to the basement. Okay. Help her first. Get to the basement. Okay?
Okay.
Do we need to say we reconvene again?
Oh.
So I need to take a roll again since we left?
Yeah. Thank you, Laura.
Yes, take roll again, please.
Simson. Voss.
Here.
Coleman. Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, okay. Due to the weather, I would entertain a motion and a second and a vote then to continue all hearings until July 22, 2024 at 7:30 a.m. All remaining.
The rest of the council and agenda and all remaining hearings, I will make a motion to continue that until next Monday, July 22 at 7:30 a.m.
Okay. Do we need a vote? Vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, and Connie's not here, so.
Six, yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn and hopefully everyone will safe and we can get the help that they need in the rest of the part of our city.